...all of our law enforcement and our men and women in the military who are stationed in the United States and in other countries, in Jesus' name we pray them, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great state of Texas.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Mayor Chris Paul.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mitchell Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Christopher Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Jerry Reesner.
Here.
Councilmember Larry Parton.
Here.
Councilmember Larry Sanders.
Here.
City Attorney Scott Francis.
Here.
City Attorney Derek Fitz is absent tonight. Roman Forest Police Captain Jeff Campbell.
Present.
City Secretary Murray Campbell.
Here.
City Administrator.
Is he here?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Scott. Next up, we have public comments. So, public comments is a section of our agenda where we allow citizens to come up and talk about anything they want to talk about. We give them three minutes to address council. There could be no discussion that comes out of this at this particular meeting, however, the council person or the mayor may wish to put this on a future agenda. Mr. Fitz, you're up first, please.
Three minutes, let's make it quick.
Yes, sir. I'm not counting when you're walking by.
Okay. Bill Fitz, resident, thirty-two years. I was here the last council meeting to address the tall weeds and grass in the vacant blocks on my street over. Today I did a drive around. It's terrible. I know all of you or some of you that were here last meeting were shaking your heads, yes, you've got to get behind me or in front of me. These folks here, we elected them, and the city administrator and code enforcement. Something's got to be done. We can't continue this way. It's deplorable out there. Open your eyes, take your blinders off, that's all I'm asking. I've had conversations with the chief, exchanged emails with the chief. I copied the council on an email because I wanted to get some traction and attention. I hope I did that, and I know I've had conversations with Councilman Parton on it. Scott, we've had conversation, but the code enforcement, my neighbor, I have to report him every couple of weeks to cut his grass. There's got to be some accountability. What about these, I call them repeat offenders? It's, I'm, you know, about them to hear with it, so whatever you guys can do as a city, folks, take a look in your neighborhood. You've got to get this place looking good. It looks terrible, especially right when you first come in on the right-hand side of the first vacant block. It's just overrun. They cut it last year because I complained. They cut the three lots on my street because I complained. Here I am again this year. I was here in twenty-three. Nothing gets done unless I complain. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Chris, what, you're up, sir?
Good evening, everybody. All of you, I know the city council has just got a ton of things that they have to look at, but one of the things that I've noticed lately is that when we're mowing on Boulevard, it doesn't appear to have the safety chutes on the end of the mower, because as I drove down up here by the flag, I got hit by debris coming out from underneath the mower. Fortunately, I had my window up, but what I ask is that, and I have looked at the mower, so I have absolutely no idea what situation we're in, but if the deflection chutes are not present, I ask that they be replaced. The second thing is, is that while they're mowing, in a lot of places, they're picking up a lot of dust and making the traffic hard to see. It's that bad, okay? And so, I'm going to suggest two or three things here. One is, if you're mowing and you're kicking up a lot of dust, consider the fact that you're stripping the topsoil off of the soil and you're keeping things from growing there. The second thing to consider is you may be pulling the grass out by the roots if your mower is set particularly low. And this is the last thing I wanted to mention was, I strongly suggest that the city adjust, take a mowing practice of bringing the mower decks up as high as they can to allow the grass to move in and grow roots and protect the soil from erosion. It's, we're going to have a dry summer, I think, again this year, and any higher than grass is, it's got just that much more moisture and it needs to live just that much longer. So, I would appreciate looking at that as well. I, the last thing I want to say is I hesitate to call something a weed, because its forefathers were here before we were. It's like the American Indians, they were here first. And if you talk to the forestry people, the native grasses in Texas are very well suited here for maintaining soil and keeping soil in place because they have very deep roots. So, that's something else we have to consider is proper erosion control and things like that, and that's all I'd like to say. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Marie, do we have any other?
None.
Says Mr. Davis. You want to discuss that with Larry maintenance, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. For clarification on, Mr. Fitz, has a letter been sent to the property owners on those addresses?
Yes, sir.
How many days are they given to respond?
Yeah, two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks. Are we still within that two weeks?
Yes, sir. Most of the properties that they've both talked about have had letters sent to them, so we're still waiting for them to take care of that issue.
Okay.
So, they, code enforcement, I can't give you the numbers.
No, you're, no, that's.
But maybe it's, it might be in a report later.
Yeah, no, we, we, so we only have to send a warning one time, or a notice one time, and after that, we don't have to do that again.
So, some of those properties are, you know, like the one on the corner that they were talking about on Chariot and the Boulevard, you know, it's been up for sale for three years, and I think that we've even reached out to the realtor to see if they can help get that done.
Thank you. Moving on, council, let's look at consent, agenda items, this is number six. Discuss and approve all items listed under this consent agenda item. So, let's look at minutes, city council meeting dated April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. This was a regular city council meeting. We're also going to review minutes, May fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Mike, everyone, excuse me, everyone also has the maintenance report available for review. And we have the financial report that, please ask any questions of Mr. Castleberry whenever or after he gives his administrative report. Why don't you go ahead and do that now?
Stick around, I'll be doing that.
I'm keeping you on your toes tonight.
All good.
Use your coach, use your coach voice.
I will. Let's talk about community relations first. The Roman Forest Events Committee and the BMW Post Forty-Eight Sixteen are going to host a Memorial Day observance this coming Monday, May twenty-sixth at ten a.m. at the Purple Heart Monument in Roman Forest Park. Ceremony remembrance for those who gave the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom starts at ten o'clock. Following that, there will be, the events committee will host a Roman Forest fiftieth anniversary calendar's day celebration at Burke Pavilion. That will start at noon. Hot dogs, hamburger combos for sale. There'll be games, vendors, bounce houses, fun for the kids, and fiftieth anniversary t-shirts will be available for sale for twenty dollars a shirt? Twenty dollars a shirt. Also, the pool and splash pad will be open at noon on that day also. In the administration report, on Tuesday, May sixth, city administration, we hosted the second task force meeting with the comprehensive plan. Come in Baxter and Biedlen, they presented information gathered over the past seven months, which is going to be shared with Roman Forest residents at the next open house. That open house is scheduled for Thursday, May the twenty-ninth here at City Hall from six to eight. Residents are, want to note that the open house is not a city council meeting, it's a come and go. Questions can be answered. They'll have everything set up around the room if you came at the first one, where you can walk around and look at the different modules that they have, whether transportation, housing, or restaurants and such, that is in their plan. The final version of the comprehensive plan after that, then, they'll have all the information. People have a chance to have feedback that night, and then the plan comes to council after that, I believe. Ordinants regarding cul-de-sac parking was updated at our last meeting on the twenty-eighth. Tomorrow, on the twentieth, city maintenance will be out and we'll be posting those signs in the cul-de-sacs.
Where's your sign?
Where is my sign?
Where does it show the sign?
Where is my sign? Hold on, I have a show.
You've been carrying on about this sign for too long.
Yeah, I have a sign. So, this sign will be on hold starting tomorrow on, I don't think they'll get to all of them tomorrow, but they'll be going up this next week and the midweek after. This is the one that we voted on, as might have been pointed out tonight, and some of are open for them, trying to keep the grass growing, keeping people off of them, keeping from parking on them or around them, keeping it so that garbage trucks and big trucks can drive around and get around the cul-de-sacs. So, those will go up starting tomorrow. The Health Center of Southeast Texas, offering affordable health care, that is set to open in mid-August. Ones that also are scheduled to open in mid-June are the Tall, Tall Liquor Deli and Grocery that's on Appleyan Way, scheduled to open in mid-June, and SAS Liquor Store at the Fuel Max is also scheduled for a mid-June opening. And then up in the front of Roman Forest, the Brown Bag Liquor does not yet have a projected opening date. All they've done is apply for a liquor license through, they have to get a permit through the city, and then it goes to the state to get the liquor license.
What else? One last question there.
Sure.
Little grocery store or deli or whatever it's going to be next to the one on Appleyan?
Yes, sir. That was the, yes, Tall, Tall Liquor Deli and Grocery.
Oh, all together, okay.
Yes, sir. They're all both next door to each other, but it's all by one company. Precinct Four County Drainage will be clearing outfalls starting into midsummer. Also, the additional crosspipe that is scheduled to be put in up by the city park will be installed, but a date has not been set on when we're going to put that additional crosspipe in up by the park. Splash pad's been open for three weeks. If you haven't been by there during the day, even while school's going on, there's still about ten to fifteen kids out there running around with bombs and strovers and stuff, and really great to see. Also, a little paint job in the park, and we got new swings for the swing sets, and it looks, looks good for the summer to start. Working on trying to find a slide for the park, those that keep asking me about a slide, working on that. I did not realize how expensive slides are, but still working to find one, have not been successful finding that yet. Pool opens on Saturday, this coming Saturday, May twenty-fourth. Daily admission is five dollars. There are families who swim, pass applications available on the website, or you can come get them here at City Hall. You'll just need to see Josh if you would like to do that. The cost is two hundred dollars for a family, and you can add an additional family member after four for twenty dollars. Swim lessons are available right now. I think we've only had four kids that have signed up so far. Signups are here at City Hall. Lessons begin on Monday, June the second, and will end on Friday, June the thirteenth. Cost is a hundred dollars for a swimmer. We did increase the number of lessons and lowered the cost of it for this year, so trying to get more kids and parents to get involved with the swim lessons. And then I was notified last week that water aerobics will tentatively start on May thirty-first, Wednesday through Friday, ten forty-five to eleven forty-five. And if you have one information on that, you can send an email to Josh here at City Hall or come see him, and he can give you contact information for, her name just went out of my head.
Karen, Karen Ryer.
Karen Ryer, yes, but I don't have her email or anything, so Josh has the information about contacting her. That is all in the administrative report.
Thank you to Commissioner Gray. He sent a team over on Monday to help with taking the estates of Roman Forest concrete out, and he will be sending a crew back tomorrow or Wednesday to finish helping with those large chunks of concrete, so I do appreciate him doing that.
Yes.
We did not have the equipment here to do that.
We did not have that equipment.
Signs downed, gone, and they got the concrete now out of there. The concrete will look about two foot thick.
Also, one last thing that's not on the report, we did mark the street lights again all the way from the park all the way down at, through, down to the Fuel Max. Also, on Appleyan, we marked all of those, and I saw two marriage trucks today sitting on the Boulevard moving very slowly, so I'm hoping that's what they were out here doing today, because we had, out of fifty-four poles, we probably had twenty-six lights that were needing to be fixed. So, they were out here today, I hope that they got most of them done, but if you, just be patient, because it, you know, it does take a little while for them to get to all of them, because some of them aren't just a simple light bulb being out, maybe somebody might have cut a line and they were running something under the road. Any other questions?
Marie, go ahead and give the highlights on the financials, please. I like your sign, Scott.
Yes, sir.
I like the color.
For John, we've got a dollar pool cash report for Wells Fargo and for Tech Pool. And for Wells Fargo, for the general fund, at the end of April, we have sixty-eight thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. And for the asset forfeiture account, we have seven hundred thirty-two dollars. On the Tech Pool, general fund, at the end of April, we have eight hundred thirty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. Reserve fund was three hundred eighty-three nine eighty-three sixty-three. Asset forfeiture is fourteen thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. FEMA, three hundred eighteen thousand sixteen dollars and sixty-four cents. The COVID local recovery, three hundred sixty-one thousand seven eighty-one twenty-five. The capital projects, thirty-eight thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. And the debt service, two hundred five thousand six forty-one eighty-four. Which gives us a grand total of a Tech Pool of two million one hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Any questions, council? Any questions? I think you're good right now. I'm going to give them time to look over that.
Quick question on the financials, and I don't know if it's for Marie or Scott, it's just something you have to look into. For the FEMA money that we have still sitting on, part of that's earmarked for improvements to the city hall?
Yes.
The parks, oh, yeah, the parks.
Thirty-one hundred dollars?
No.
No, I think it's a lot more than that for a city hall.
For a chief's expansion.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, so that was going to be my question, for both COVID and FEMA, do we have timelines on those that we have to spend them by or they have to be refunded, and do we know what those timelines are?
One for the building expansion on the COVID has to be spent by December thirty-first of twenty-six.
Then I would say we probably need to direct it, let's get, let's get a start on that.
That needs to be actually spent on, not just.
Because if you're talking about spent, it's already been out, if you're talking about spent, then time is short.
Yes, that's my understanding, is that it has to be spent, allocation only before I go to the town.
Mayor, I do know that the chief, speaking with the chief, he sent back some changes to the original plan to the metal building, and waiting on them to get back to us with additional change in prices.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions on financials or administration, council? Captain, you're up, sir. Police Department report.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember?
Chairman, your presence. All right, so the Roman Forest Police Department held its first order of blood drive in April. That's the police department. We have twenty-two donors who donated twenty-five units of blood, potentially saving seventy-five lives. Our next blood drive is scheduled for July twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, right now. This guy's moving, he's coming up. Captain Campbell has completed the first of three limited leadership command college Out of eighty thousand, odd, over eighty thousand officers in Texas, only three thousand officers have completed this course. So, it's a very distinguished course. It took me five years to get into it, and when I complete all three months, I'll have some, and there's some behind my name. That Tilla celebrated his seventh birthday in April. Over the past few years, he's been a valuable asset to our department and the surrounding communities. Average retirement age for a canine is seven years, and plans are underway to celebrate Tilla's upcoming retirement either later this year or beginning of next year. Officer Cole Harco, Cole, he's our newest member of the Roman Forest Police Department. He came from Montgomery County Constable's Office, Precinct Four. His first shift day will actually be tomorrow. He's been here getting his uniforms and paperwork turned in, and his first shift starts tomorrow. We anticipate a quick training since he's already been with the Montgomery County Precinct Four, he knows the area, and so he should be easy to train. Finally, that replacement vehicle we've been waiting on is in service, in the streets, running right now. Unit ten has been restripped for code enforcement use. That's funny, I saw someone on Facebook posted that code enforcement had a fifty-thousand-dollar vehicle, really is the old time, two thousand eleven. This unit is a better fit for the current code enforcement officer, and the old code vehicle will be used as an unmarked police and city administration car. All our Glock cameras have been installed, and they prove to be helpful in investigations. And the police station building extension project has been making some progress. We consulted with a local metal company, building company, which provided us with a cost estimate and ideas for our review. We're making some modifications at the request of our engineer and architect, and will ask the company to adjust their estimated accordingly. And the next step we're trying to figure out is if we're going to have this done one piece at a time by different companies, or have one company do all of it, and if we do it that way, then we got a lot of bits. So, that's kind of what we're looking at, what we're going to do at that point. Both FEMA grants have been completed, and FEMA has been asking, clarifying questions and making slight changes, so the scope of work and cost estimates for some mitigation projects on security circle in Appleyan Way have also been submitted to FEMA. We expect FEMA to soon turn over the grants for this new year, too. Now, I know we've given them a dollar amount that we said it was, and they come back and they set the dollar amount, so even though we say this is what it costs us, they're going to come back and say this is what we're going to give you, and that number's set by the fence and the state, you don't have that number yet. D.R. Horton's sign has been removed from the meeting in Roman Forest. D.R. Horton declined to keep the sign, and our city team has taken it down at D.R. Horton's expense, so they pay for it. The sign was causing drainage issues as, and was too close to the road, posing a visibility and physical traffic hazard. Additionally, D.R. Horton is a conundrum on a permanent fee for the sign. All right, I'm going to switch over to code enforcement report. So, for the month, last month, we have ten code inspections, three code citation issued. We have two cases that are pending action or investigation, so we can't go into detail on that, because it's an ongoing investigation, but we do have two cases that are pending. We have three debris rubbish removal, three land use, one expired or no permit. We have one animal call, six violation notices in person, four voluntary compliance incidents, two extensions, seven hide weeds, eight parking on premises, four junk unregistered vehicles, one fence, and eleven signs. So, our code enforcement officer, Josh, he'll be adjourned for a week in June, and just keep in mind that he also does our permits, so he's out there on the streets looking for code violations, but he's also here in the office working permits, and on his after-hour assignment, he's in charge of the pool. He's not doing the pool during his duty hours for code permits, so that's an extra assignment for him. So, we're going to get the police department to help assist with referrals to him, so that when we're out on the street, we're going to start looking for code violations and refer them over to him. We are changing our policy on abatements to match the ordinance. Before in the past, what we were doing is we were issuing letters, sending citations, and waiting for responses, and that takes a long time, and I know you're saying that it's taking a long time to get results. So, we're changing it now to where we're sending their Monday morning letter, and then we're going to abate it, whatever, it's either seven or fourteen days, whatever it is, we're going to abate and/or issue a citation at the same time. So, this way, the work can get done quicker instead of waiting for responses back and forth, especially with owners that we can't find. We're going to go ahead and abate it, and do what we have to do to get our citizens, our city, done. So, just be patient with us. Josh has been working hard, and he's getting, finally starting to get caught up on all the backlogs, so we're, he's done a good job, but we are working with a very good amount of staff, but we are working hard to keep our city. Any questions?
All right, looking back over to consent items under six, this will include minutes April twenty-eighth, minutes, May fifth, maintenance court, permit, financial report, city administrator report, police report. Any questions? Any comments? I would just need a motion, second, to accept and send agenda items as presented. Motion, county motion to accept as presented for the consent agenda items. Motion, Councilman Davis, to accept and send agenda items under six as presented, the second. Councilman Reesner, seconds. All in favor of approval? Show it as you now. Moving on to item seven, discuss, consider status upon projects. Mr. Fitz is absent tonight. Do we have any updates that you would like to bring us up on, on any of these?
No, sir.
Okay, council, before we move on, any questions on anything under item seven, or Okay, moving on to item eight, discuss and consider a grand marshal for the Fourth of July parade this coming Fourth of July. That's your up, sir.
So, new territory, how the process works, I didn't understand until recently, but so I asked for. so I asked for nominations from council and from the events committee, we had three different people that were nominated for discuss and approve, one of them for the Fourth of July parade. I suppose, read them out, you see them, how do you want to do it?
Read them out.
Read them out, alright, nominations that came in. Nominations that came in were, uh, Chief Stephen Carlisle, Frank McGrady from the Eastmont Member County improvement district, and Sherry Lowe, the principal at Dogwood Elementary. All three offer different great things for our city. If you got questions about any of them, I'm sure we can find answers for you, but, uh...
My understanding is Sherry Lowe, the principal of Dogwood Elementary?
I hear you.
I understand that Sherry Lowe, the principal over Dogwood Elementary, she is leaving there?
Yes, sir.
Now, and going, I don't know where she's going, but...
She took a job at Central Office, she was the director of Elementary Education, so I just, when I saw her name and talked about it with the mayor, it was a good thing to come across as someone that, uh, did a lot for our kids, our community.
Oh, and she been at Dogwood Elementary?
Uh, about five or six years, I think, there's only been two principals at that school since it opened, Mr. Hamilton and her.
I, I, Mayor, I feel that all three are, would be a great, uh, grand marshal. But since this lady, Sherry Lowe, is leaving and has been working for our kids in the community for several years, I'd like, I'd like to nominate her. I'll just, whatever the rest of the council and the board will do.
Alright, Councilman, what's your opinion? Councilman Davis?
I agree that all three of them are, are good choices, I don't have a strong preference.
Council?
All three are good choices.
I know.
I was, but it wasn't, there it is, it slipped out. It, uh, she came to our aid, what, two years ago, when we first, when we did, uh, one of the first parades out of a park lawn. And we needed a letter, and it was after school days were over, and they were there, and we didn't talk to her. And we got her letter, otherwise we would not have been able to open a parade out of, out of a school, a park lawn. I, I think, while the, everybody's been choice, um, and, uh, since she is leaving, I, I think, uh, she would be a good consideration.
Alright, Councilman Ellis, any thoughts?
Yeah, I think Ms. Lowe would be a great consideration.
Councilman Ford?
I agree.
Okay, so I have a nomination on the floor for Sherry Lowe, um... Councilman Sanders nominates Sherry Lowe to, uh, to be our grand marshal for the upcoming Fourth of July parade. Any other discussion? All in favor of, I'm sorry, there is discussion?
Second, should, should she not be able, should she not be able to?
I got a second on this too, Councilman Ford, a second, you're good, keep going, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Should she not be able to, uh, do we need a, uh, other mixed choice as, as, as part of this?
I agree, who would be your backup choice to add to your nominations?
I know the chief is out there all the time with us, but, you know, the people that were handling, people have been very helpful with us and they've lost money to us, I would like to go there and...
Frank McGrady?
Yeah.
Okay, so he modified his nomination to include Frank McGrady as an alternate in case Ms. Lowe cannot participate, you still second?
Second.
Second, and Councilman Ford, all in favor, show it as you announce. Would you inform her?
Please, sir, I'll take your turn.
Okay, moving on to item ten, uh, discuss the progress of public park and consider future use of the park. Councilman Reesner? I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, hang on, this guy, I've already circled it. Discuss, consider the approval, this is item nine, discuss, consider the approval of the Roman Forest Events Committee's future events. I was actually gonna make her go last. You're up, you're up.
You wanna come present?
No, you can do it.
I got it, okay.
You go with your sign.
So in your packet is the, uh, May through December events by the Roman Forest Events Committee. A lot of different things through there, uh, Memorial Day events in June, uh, start a plan for the parade, coffee and donuts, garage sale month, and a parade in July, and also a Dogwood Elementary, uh, fill it back, back to see what they need, uh, with help for the upcoming school year. And then August is garage sale month, coffee and donuts, and there's gonna be a CPR class that's free for the community. Uh, Chief Ryan walks, looking to find a date for them, uh, September and end of the summer barbecue with another, uh, car show, and then, uh, October, uh, National Night Out on October the seventh, also a trunk or tree and a garage sale month. November, community cleanup at the park, holiday craft event, that'll be hosted across the street at the church gym, coffee and donuts, and then December, Christmas tree lighting, house judging, and breakfast with Santa. That's a new one on the list, I think. So we ask that you approve their calendar of events for the rest of the calendar year.
Alright, Council, any questions on any of the dates of the events?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we, uh, approve the Roman Forest Events Committee's, uh, future events through twenty twenty-five as written.
Most on the floor, Councilman Ford, to approve Special Events Committee's future, uh, uh, events as presented on this calendar, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second, Councilman Sanders, all in favor of approval. Now I can move on to ten. Item ten, discuss the progress of Hubbard Park and consider the future use of the park, Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I've been out to Hubbard Park a couple of times and looked around and found out that, uh, that money, GPS wasn't smart enough to find a tower, I'm gonna have to order a new GPS, but, uh, our city administrator, Scott, and I went out, what, last week? And walked it, they had found one of the dead men, and, uh, we found it, fact validated, they were all made of steel, the middle of the dead men. The problem is, there's so much debris on that lot. As I go through there with my detonator detector, you can't swing it without picking up steel or something like that, and it, which does not make it a, a good environment, uh, for our, our kids. Uh, we discussed various ways to take care of this, uh, because that lot does need some remediation. And, uh, one of the things we discussed, uh, filter to go under buildings and this kind of thing is expensive for people to get, to find, to get trucked. And, uh, so, uh, what is going on is, is, uh, Scott has put the word out to, uh, uh, look for somebody who would come in and for free, take that dirt, uh, take that debris and, and haul it off and use it, that'll be our first attempt. If that can happen, and there's a lot of stuff out there, we, off the end, if you look, that one is probably three and a half feet high, and I had to go down just to, just off, off that, off that mound. So there's, there's a tremendous amount, there's, there's several hundreds of yards of dirt out there, debris, that needs to go.
I know who will take that.
You know who will take that?
Ronnie Webb will take that.
Okay.
To fill in that pond he's been filling in.
The, uh, the only thing that we would need probably is somebody with a transom to be able to tell them how deep they had to go to stay within our property. The drawing, uh, that you all should have in your packet, uh, done by our city engineer, upon everything of need, we will go out, our metal detectors, a little plate, by post, so that they can actually have a, a visual sign where they can take their tractors in and, uh, not take them in, because we don't want somebody to run a fifteen ton tractor into somebody's backyard. So once that is done, and we also need, um, somebody to step in as director of the parts committee, is that the correct name, what would we call that?
That is what we have, so, so, I'm a position and not being a refill.
I'm sorry?
It has not been refilled since, uh, the last session.
Uh, and, and there's, there's some number of responsibilities that would go on with that, and I think Chief Carlisle is in charge of that effort. So we need somebody to look at that, uh, and that, to me, would include applying for grants, finding money, uh, helping develop a usable plan, figuring out how big it is, what parking areas would be, are you gonna have pickleball and baseball, what are you gonna have? So there's, there's a lot involved, we need a responsible individual to step up and put that committee together. And that's, uh, all the update I have right now, I am still going to, uh, to see how, how eBay's a literal placement, what comes for finding stuff like GPS with, with a tenth of a second accuracy. So, uh, that's the next thing that I, I need to do. Also, I have probably thirty-five or forty pictures of, at, from a height of about a hundred and twenty feet of the surrounding area, which will give a good idea of where some of the dead men are. And it's an interesting thing to see, uh, these little neat spots on the ground that are people in some of those pictures. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thanks, everybody, yep, to keep that in mind, we are, Ronnie Webb wants all the filled dirt, concrete, whatever, to fill that pond in, so, whatever people that we can find to do that removal, that is a place that it would not cost us to get rid of them, I'm sure. Alright, any other discussion questions? So no actions to be taken on this, Eric?
No, no action this time, thank you.
Moving on to item eleven, discuss and consider approval code, uh, code ordinance, chapter eight, article six, substandard buildings. Is that you that added some language to this, or is that Councilman Ford?
So I think Councilman Ford, we're gonna put this together as a collection of several different municipalities ordinances, and then we're gonna consolidate it down. Um, I've got some comments on it that I would like to share with the other council members, won't be ready for this evening, but we'll table this to the next meeting, I can have my comments out to everybody to, uh, I guess my intent is to make it not as nuanced as some of these are, that I don't think the intent is to get into windows, doors, and countertops, that it's more the habitability of the building in general. And I think the, not the first section, the eight dash one twenty-two, but the subsequent sections, eight dash one twenty-three, eight dash one twenty-four, one twenty-five, are all very solid, they're written. We would like to remove some of the eight one twenty-two so that we're not getting into a micromanaging of condemning somebody's home for some wood rod or crack foundations or things like that, that's not the intent. Or at least not my intent.
That's your, Councilman Ford?
I, I put it together originally, it's been a while.
Sure.
I mean, I, it's happened eighteen months ago or so, so...
So long.
I guess, what is our, um... What is it that we're looking to do?
So I have requested this be revised for discussion based on, we still have a half dozen homes that are still blue tarp with no sign of imminent repair from Hurricane Burl almost a year ago, that they've made no effort to make repairs. Some of them have storage units in their front yard for nearly a year now. You know, the, uh, either Conexes or, uh, the Pacrat storage modules that are just in there, the homes are vacant, they're somewhere between a nuisance and a hazard, and now we have the one that's burned down on Roman Forest, that I think there needs to be an enforceable timeline of when the home needs to either be restored or demolished. And in that interim time, the lots need to be completely fenced so that they're not a hazard to people going up there and trying to either loot or just sightsee and get injured. So that was my request.
Yeah, I, I do remember when I, when I put this together, I think I made this comment in council meeting, we're, we're one of the few cities in the state that doesn't have one decent place.
Yeah.
So, so I did, I did try to, you know, look at what other cities our sides had, and, uh, so this is pretty close to...
Are you gonna give a tabling until we can, uh, so he can add some, uh...
Oh, definitely, definitely, yeah, so, so probably...
Yeah, any other?
Council Davis and I. I'll have my comments back to the city administrator this week, and then he can distribute them back out for other people to take it from there.
Any other comments before we take a vote, I'll take one?
Yeah, just any, any, any changes you wanna make with the city administrator, and then I can, I can do the updates and say back out, so...
Mr. Reesner, um, since, um, today, I was gonna pass out to all your folks, now if you want to, when that is, we can put some of your additions, changes to it.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and then we can actually review it at the same time with, uh, Councilman Davis and I. Thank you. Alright. So would that be said, do you want to continue, or are you motioning to table until you can?
I don't know if anybody else has any other comments, otherwise I'll make the motion to table for this month and bring it up again next month.
Okay. Motion on the floor, Councilman Davis, to table, um, uh, substandard buildings, ordinance, seconded. Uh, Councilman Sanders, all in favor of tabling, if you can announce. Item twelve, discuss, consider approval on this two eighteen dash C L, I'm sorry, dash C, logging and removing trees and related debris.
Mr. Mayor, that is a very interesting scenario, meaning that I spent enough on having trees, you know, the last year I could have bought a nice huge car. What started this was, uh, after having our house killed by one huge tree, and I was living in a rental for four months, I got to looking, my wife got to looking at some of the other trees. Uh, and I figured, well, you don't need to get a permit, maybe, well, after reading the city's current permit for you to go from free trees to having to bring two thousand dollars or thirty one for two thousand dollars, there's no intermediate range for homeowner. So that, that was the, that was the driving motivation behind that, I don't mind paying for a permit, but when you have a, when you have a house built, you have people go in, they clear the lot, uh, all those costs are part of the construction, well, when it's all said, those costs are buried in the mortgage and a person that receives. You wanna have a tree cut, I'll tell you right now, through experience, you're gonna start at about two hundred and fifty dollars and go up to forty-five hundred dollars. I've had that, that's the range I paid over, over the last year. The, uh, so what we, I thought what we needed was an intermediate step. Also, we gauged trees, anything over four inches, my God, I got some rose bushes that are heavier than four inches across. Not right now, they die, but, uh, I think, consider a tree, the base of that tree needs to be at least six inches. The, um, once we got from there, you could have six trees cut without having to pay for a permit, and that's mine. Uh, I had six cut, but I still have two more, but we had no intermediate where I could come in and got a permit and have as many trees as I want. So what I figured we had was pre-construction, that is where a, a lot has, uh, uh, nothing on it, nobody's living on it, and you have to come in and live it and walk that lot out. Then an intermediate step would be if I had somebody, we had somebody living there, or a viable, you know, a shop, a store, whatever, home. The difference there is when a person has to have, they don't have to come up to two thousand dollars to begin with for security bond, all they need is a permit, and they can cut as many trees as they, they wanted, um, based upon, based upon that, the fact they're living there. living there, and if I had to come up and spend two thousand dollars, and then the money you caught you to have the trees down, some families, that's a heck of a hit. The final one is landscaping, and that's where you can have, cut up to six trees, and that's fine, but if I have three dead trees, those should be free. If I have a tree hanging over and it's causing a potential hazard to drivers down the street, that tree needs to be gone. And so I figured if we had three categories, pre-construction, post-construction, and landscaping, that should take care of our needs. I just say, I don't want to pay a permit that's, you know, that's helps our permit office out of those fees. For the, and the other part of the original one is that anybody parking on the street that is strictly prohibited, if I had to park on the street and do anything like putting trees, and the way the ordinance read, anything else before that didn't matter, there was no parking on the streets. Well, I'll tell you, from experience, a neighbor two doors down, they put a truck on their, on the lot, just to test the soil. And two four-wheel drive trucks later, they told it out, they had to bring a commercial wrecker, and I don't know what kinda damage that did. So there are those cases that all of us knows, you drive down the street today, the reality of it is, is the tree cutters are gonna park their vehicles on the side, they're gonna use smaller tractors to, if they cut the tree, take it out and go out and put in a trailer. So I thought our ordinance should reflect the world of reality, not one that's not, oh, you can't have any, you can't have any trailers, whatever, on the street collecting the trees. So part of my motivation was to bring reality back to this ordinance and make it so that we have each person, if I wanted to cut ten trees, because little trees are nice, big trees can be house killers from personal experience. And so that's, that's the whole, my wife has two more, she says, I don't want to put a tree. So, well, we need to wait a little bit now. So anyway, that's, that's the driving motivation between, on the addition of the original.
I guess a general question, given the comprehensive plan is about to come up in discussions for the open house, and then they're gonna give us a report. One of their recommendations is a tree preservation ordinance, where the way I read this is you can pretty much remove any trees you want, and then if everybody clearcuts the trees, pretty much we've got Tovola instead of Roman Forests. And some of the homes recently that have gone in, they have completely clearcut the lots, taken out every single tree, and then they start from scratch with builder trees that are three inch diameter, two inch diameter, right? And I guess I would like to consider tabling this until after we have more information from the comprehensive plan, and if the general direction that city residents would like is tree preservation as well, then it needs to be balanced that if there is a reason to remove the tree, it's overhanging your home, it's overhanging the street, it's dead, by all means, take it out, but not just clearcut a lot. There was a recent sale on Magnolia Bend, right, and they came in, they took out four, they were probably three foot diameter oaks, just because they didn't want them on their lot, right, just clearcut the lot completely.
But the lots that they have now under construction, you go under Roman Forests, granted, they clearcut those down there, but the general homes around here, you'll see them cut out the trees, you really don't have anything that stops them from cutting them.
And that's the intent of a tree preservation ordinance, like in the woodlands, I believe the requirement is, if it's not within ten feet of the home, you cannot remove it without reason. Like you can't just come and cut down trees because you don't want the tree on your lot.
Well, I think that also in case you have one that believes danger to your house, it's gonna get bigger, you need to take it.
I think it needs to be a guideline for it, right? And I'm not proposing one tonight, so I don't have anything in mind, I haven't seen other municipalities' tree preservation ordinances, I just know it was one of the recommendations for the comprehensive plan. So rather than amending the logging one that might then directly conflict with the tree preservation if we decide to do that, I'd like to review the one that you proposed and then pair that with a tree preservation if we decide to do that.
I don't have a problem with that, I wanna do this right. I wanna make it so that if a person needs to cut nine trees, they can cut nine trees, and that's the main, that is the main goal, is to make sure there'll be little trees that they don't become a house. And that's why, it is to make sure that the person doesn't have to run in two thousand dollars or whatever it happens to be. One of the other things is, I changed, I added an insurance requirement to the post-construction, where they have to have at least homeowner's insurance. You'd be surprised, the number of people who do not have homeowner's insurance just because they can't afford it. But first, it needs to be insured, just why their insurance required is required on the contract. But I don't have a problem with that.
And some of the derelict houses are a direct result of trees falling on them, so there's a lot of considerations to go into, but I'd like to just make sure we have a good general discussion.
I have a question there, should we include also, if someone's coming to cut nine trees out of their lot, should we, and they have to replace those trees with other trees?
Tree preservation, please, don't, yeah, task to see that, or my son lives, they have to replace it with a suitable tree, or they can't cut it if it's not diseased or something. Yeah, there's, there's something within reason. Council Manells, councilman pardon, any other comments on this before we move on?
No, I think what he's written is reasonable.
It is.
Anybody that's had a tree fall across their house, they would definitely disagree with your tree preservation ideas, right? Got somebody in my family that that happened to, right, and so they don't have to see a tree on their lot now, right, and they would have a lot of trees there, right, but I know it's by our perspective or experience, right, but, you know.
Yeah.
I think he's, he's, he did a good job putting those together.
No, it is, yeah, I agree with where it is going with that. I tend to lean towards agreeing with Councilman Davis, I think we need to look at not, not allowing there to be just like lots with two inch diameter building, buried trees, because we do wanna preserve the forest, the Roman Forests. But what you, what you proposed is definitely something that we need to probably do. But yeah, let's wait and look, look for that. So do you wanna table this, councilman?
I'll make a motion to table this and that.
Okay.
I can't put in Councilman Davis' resume, because I want it to be right, I don't want somebody to come along and say, ah, I really messed up with that one. We needed to cover everything that we can have.
All right, motion on the floor, Councilman Reeser, table item twelve, ordinance two eighteen, dash C, till the next meeting, seconded, five. Councilman Sanders, seconded, all in favor of tabling item twelve, it is unanimous. Council, so the next meeting is voted on, I just discuss in closed session. So we have some information that came in today that we do need to meet as, as council and go into closed session and discuss. However, I think we need some study time, some review time, before we do that. Scott, City Administrator Cusworth has this information hot off the press, and, but I think we all need time to review it. Do you agree with that, Scott?
I think that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would probably be best at this point. So I don't see a reason that we need to go into closed session and discuss this tonight.
Sure, that's fine.
It's, it's, it's not on here, so I'm just gonna declare that we have no reason to go to closed session tonight. Okay? City requests future agenda items.
I'll go first then. Set a meeting to discuss this.
There you go. So everybody, let's look at our calendar, we do need to set that meeting.
Keep in mind that you have on the twenty-ninth, the open house, and on the twenty-seventh is hurricane preparedness at the atrium that probably people are gonna wanna go to, that's at six o'clock on the twenty-seventh.
I'll be out of town for the long weekend, starting on the evening of the twenty-second of this week. However, it's not one hundred percent necessity that I'm here, so. Y'all do need to do this on a Thursday, that's fine. Councilman Pardon is more than capable of handling this.
Thursday's the open house?
Thursday is open house, that's.
We could have Wednesday, the twenty-eighth.
Okay, yeah, you're right, twenty-eighth, I'm available twenty-eighth. Yeah? You're right, okay. Twenty-seven, what we doing on twenty-seven?
That's the hurricane preparedness at the atrium. Good information thing for our city, that some of y'all not also be attending, so.
Twenty-ninth?
Is the comprehensive.
That pushes us another week.
Twenty-eighth's out?
Yeah, I mean, pushes us into June.
Okay. I think he was asking if the twenty-eighth was out for discussion.
I mean, y'all, y'all are not available.
I'm available.
I'm not.
You're not.
Councilman Sanders is not.
Let's pick a time when we can all be here.
You're out every Thursday?
How about June third?
June third? Councilman Huggs? You get it? Okay, let's set that, special meeting, six o'clock, June third. All right.
If it's all right, I will pass, uh, four berry development to come that night, not be in here at the first morning, but if it's available, should there, discussion need to be had, that's our view.
They need to be here and be available, absolutely. What else, council concerns, future agenda items, agenda, I'm gonna email to the administrator, but we can still put it out here.
Will we have the proposed comprehensive plan by the next meeting? Right, we've got the open house on the twenty-ninth, will they have a package to us to review?
By June twenty-third, that's our next meeting.
If so, I would like to get that on the, the meeting minutes, the meeting agenda to discuss.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
If they're coming to present, I'll make sure that you have it in advance, too.
Yeah, that's fine. Any early, a little?
That should be enough time to review what our people are going to do with the, what people are gonna do with looking at the forest, the Red Door Station right there, and so I would like to add the logging ordinance back.
It's coming back up, we table, so it will come right back up on the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, item, both those items will come back up, eleven and twelve. All right.
I'd like to do some type of discussion of when we're gonna finish this comprehensive plan, because it's been going way too long, we need to get it.
We'll better answer for that after the open house.
Okay.
We will, and that is just the first. They are gonna be on our next meeting for discussion in some form or fashion.
I can sure right.
Okay, so we will be able to discuss that at that time.
Okay.
And maybe we'll have those answers at that time. All right. I've got nothing other than I will not be available that twenty-third, council, regular meeting, I will be out of town that week, that week before, and that Monday, Tuesday, so that'll be your meeting.
I should be here.
Okay.
That's all I have, any other business? Just need a motion, second? All right, most on the floor, Councilman Sanders to adjourn for the evening, do I have second? Second, Councilman Reeser, withdraw. All in favor of adjournment? It is unanimous, time is seven oh six, this meeting is adjourned.